Welcome everyone to our third session of the All Church Bible Study. I'm so glad you're with me for this study. And I just wanted to say thanks so much to everyone who sent me emails and made contact with me over the study. I really enjoyed the encouragement as well as just talking about and dialoguing together on the Scriptures, so that's been fun. I'm excited about today and our study, looking at the second chapter of Timothy. So got lots to cover as we always do. Shooting it from a new location over in my consulting office, but I think everything will work out. There happened to be doing some painting on the building, so a couple of guys may walk by occasionally in the back window, but I don't think that'll throw anything off. We'll just keep studying the Word of God together and appreciate the opportunity to be able to do that. So let's jump into the study. Again, grab your Bibles, follow along with me. You might want to have a pencil or pen for notes or just marking certain places in your Bible, because it's always helpful when you get back to take a look at what you've studied and to be thinking about the different things we've talked about. I also have my notes that I printed out for us as we go through God's Word together today. And so let's review a little bit of what we've gone through in the first two sessions. First of all, I want to review from last week, and we talked about how Paul reviewed how God was pouring out His grace into his life. And we discussed various people that he sent to Paul to help him in this big life-changing experience that he had in terms of coming to know the Lord and then becoming an apostle. Remember that he said on a couple of occasions through the first chapter that he was an apostle by command and that everything he has to say should be received with full acceptance. So everything should be, you know, he deserves full acceptance of what he's teaching here. So let's keep that in mind as we jump into this next chapter as well. And I want to kind of remind you that he had two focuses about the church. First of all, he said the church should be sharing God's mercy, that message of Jesus Christ, that's the purpose of the church. And the result, or the second purpose, is that people might come to have eternal life. And that's the key, those two things. Don't get away from those two things. Paul reminds us, you know, stick focused on that. Apparently, the church in Ephesus was having some problems keeping that focus going. And so he, you know, he really pushes that pretty hard. And then, of course, he gave encouragement to Timothy, the person he's actually writing to, although we know that through this, through Timothy, he's trying to get to some folks in the church that needed some help and support. But in right at the end of chapter one, he really wants to encourage Timothy, a guy, young man, good friend of his, who has taken on a huge responsibility, a big challenge in the church of Ephesus, a powerful church, a church as we saw that was mentioned in Revelation by John, that John, you know, mentions. And so there were a lot of people in the church who, it was kind of an egotistical church, who thought about themselves in kind of a higher respect. It was more important to be seen than really be thinking about those two things, which were sharing the gospel and making sure people come to know the Lord. So they were having some issues there. And he wants to encourage Timothy as he takes on this project. So he tells Timothy, you know, "Fight the good fight." Remember, he mentioned that? "Hold on to the faith." That was very important. "And have a good conscience, you know, do the best in both your private and public life, so that nothing..." As you challenge these people, and sometimes when you challenge people, they get mad about it and they have a kind of a negative response. And so, "Don't have anything in your life and in your ministry there that they could use against you." I guess that's what, you know, Paul was trying to get across to Timothy, because we don't want this whole thing shipwrecked, you know? Don't shipwreck your faith. Don't shipwreck what we're trying to do in the church of Ephesus, which is bringing it to full health and vitality. All right, so that's kind of what we've covered in the first two sessions very quickly. They are on the Church YouTube channel, so you just have to go to the church website and go to the YouTube channel, and you'll see and be able to catch up if this is your first time with us, or if you just want to be kind of reminded about what we've covered, then you can go back and watch that. But today, we're going to cover the focus on some of the problems. Now, Paul, you know, he set the tone. He kind of went over all the things we just reviewed, and then now he's going to specifically begin to focus on the problems that are happening in the church of Ephesus. And the first one is about worship. So he gets right off to the key point. One of the most important things that a church can do, it's one of the most important things that RB Community Church can do, right, is our worship. And so he goes right after that right away and says, "Okay, there's some things that we need to talk about here." And if you look in chapter two, right away, in verses one through three, you'll see that. He says, "I urge then, first of all, that requests, prayers, intercession, and thanksgiving be made for everyone, for kings and all those in authority..." And remember, Paul was writing the time of Nero, horrible, horrible emperor of Rome, causing all kinds of problems. And here he is saying that we need to pray for that. "And this is the reason, that we may live peaceful and quiet lives in all godliness and holiness." And this is good. "And pleases God, our Savior." So that's the good thing. All right, so let's stop there for just a minute and take a look at what Paul was talking about there. Obviously, he's interested in not only, you know, praying for the leadership in, over Rome and over the community that they lived in and so forth, but the point to that was so that they might have a very peaceful and quiet life, so that they can live in godliness and holiness, so they can be doing the things that they need to do as a church. And that's a pretty important part. So let's take that, you know, this living quiet lives, peaceful lives, and then in godliness, in all godliness, I underline that one, godliness, and holiness, I underline that as well. You might want to mark that in your text, godliness and holiness. Well, I lit those words up, and you know that godliness occurs 10 times in the pastoral epistles. That's first Timothy, second Timothy, and Titus. And nowhere else in Paul's writing. He just uses it in the pastoral epistles, which I think are pretty important. And of course, for Ephesus, as he looks at their worship and he's concerned about their worship services, he wants to write about godliness to them. And the kind of godliness, what's the source of this godliness that he wants? That is holiness. Now, interesting, because that word, holiness, means a deep reverence for God. So he's telling the people in Ephesus, hey, if you, to be godly, you have to be very reverent of God. You have to have this holiness, a deep reverence for God. And then you'll live godly, you'll live like Christ, you'll live as our Lord called you to live. But first, you have to have a reverence for God. And somewhere along the line, that church had missed out on that whole idea of reverence. And they weren't leading the godly life. That's of course why he was writing the letter. That's what the concern was. That was what Timothy's been charged to bring back, and it has to come back by this holiness. And that is the heart of worship. So he goes right after that in the beginning. Their worship was not godly. It wasn't creating godliness. It wasn't creating disciples. It wasn't creating people who are growing in their faith. And so he says, "First of all, your worship has to represent a holiness, okay, this reverence for God." That's what has to be happening in your worship service. So I think that's pretty important. He's establishing the whole point there. He's setting the tone for what he wants to say concerning the worship at Ephesus. And, you know, we can think along with him and explore that, and then ponder upon ourselves and our own church, at RB Community Church, about our worship and so forth, to make sure that it's something done in that sense of holiness that Paul was talking about, so that people will live godly lives. And I think that's important. All right, well, let's move on to verses three through seven. And this is going to kind of sound familiar. Here we go, with Paul hitting this point again. He says, "This is good, this holiness and creating godliness, this is good. And pleases God, our Savior." So this is what's pleasing to God, is to have a reverence for Him, and in that, to become godly, you know, to become like Christ. And so then he goes on, verse four, "Who wants all men to be saved and to come to a knowledge of the truth? For there is one God and one mediator between God and men, the man Christ Jesus, who gave Himself as a ransom for all men, the testimony given in its proper time. For this is the purpose. I was appointed a herald and apostle. I am telling the truth. I'm not lying, and a teacher of the true faith to the Gentiles." Well, we've heard him say that in the first chapter. This is the third time. This is the third time that Paul summarizes the gospel. I think when you hear that, in just a chapter and a half of this letter he's writing, a third time where he says, "Look at, this is the important part. This is the gospel." I say it must be pretty important. It must have been a big, big concern in the church of Ephesus. The purpose is, and I underline that, the purpose is Christ Jesus. The purpose is not the other things he's going to be talking about in just a minute. We're going to cover some of those today. No, the purpose is Jesus Christ. The purpose is that reverence and holiness, so you can be like Christ. And so I underline that, Christ Jesus. And then down in verse seven, "And for this purpose, for this whole purpose..." What he's talking about is that Christ was a ransom, the whole gospel story, that salvation that was poured out to Paul that we saw in chapter one, all the things he'd been talking about. It's for this purpose. So I underline this purpose, Christ Jesus. That's the point and focus of worship. We're going to find out that the Ephesians had been focusing on some other stuff, but now Paul's saying, "I want you to remember that we need to focus on Christ Jesus." And then he goes on, of which again, he goes back to his apostleship that had been in question. He wants people to listen, pay attention to him. And so he says, "I was appointed a herald and apostle. I am telling the truth." Again, goes back to saying that, we've heard that now, this is the third time, bringing it home. That's how important it is. There apparently were a lot of hard-headed Dutchmen like myself, you know, hard-headed Dutchmen who couldn't hear the message in that church, and he had to lay it on strong and hit it home, you know? This is it. This is the purpose. And I am an apostle and I herald, I proclaim, I share this gospel, not myself. We found that out in chapter one. "I'm a sinner," he said. So it's not my message, it's the message of Christ that needs to be brought out. "I'm telling the truth. I'm not lying, and I am a teacher of..." And then I underline this part in my Bible, "true faith, of the true faith to the Gentiles." You know, that's what's going to be, that's what's going to be something that the Gentiles are going to be excited about hearing, this true faith, this message of salvation from Christ. They don't care about other stuff that you've been talking about, you know, that the Ephesian church had been concentrated on. They were in a wonderful position in Ephesus, as we noted in the first couple of sessions, that the church in Ephesus was a crossroads, pretty important town in the Roman Empire. It was a wonderful place to share the gospel. It had perfect opportunity to do so, but they had to share the gospel, the gospel that people so desperately hunger for. And that's the same with us, right? We're in a wonderful place. What a strategic area of our community, RB Community Church is in. And it's so wonderful to be able to present the gospel in a powerful way that people can hear and have changed lives. And that's our whole focus, to be where we're at. We are there for the true faith, he writes, so that Gentiles, so those outside of the faith, you know, our Gentiles are those people who are outside of the faith, so that they might hear the gospel and be able to come to know Jesus Christ. So that, and that happens through solid, good worship. Other ways too, but in this case, he wanted to focus on their worship, because that wasn't where it needed to be. The focus wasn't there. And the same, you know, so for us, you know, our worship needs to be one in which we have the true faith, that that's the purpose, that Christ is the center of it, that it's godly and holy, and all those things that he talked about in so doing. And then he went to, we go to verse eight, and here's where it gets very, very interesting, that there are many different interpretations of this passage, and I don't want to shy away from it. I think I wrote down some things that I really like about our church. You know, we often say, "Well, I love my church." And then somebody assures in what way they love the church. I think that's great. And I love the church too. And here's some ways that I wrote down that I find that I love RB Community Church. First of all, we don't hesitate to talk about difficult passages in Scripture. And the passages, the verses from eight all the way down to the end of the chapter there, verse 14, have been kind of difficult to interpret. Now, I'm going to put some stuff out there, but you know, it's not easy, and we have to take some time to think about it, but we don't shy away from that. We don't try to avoid it. We know the Holy Spirit will be working in this process and help us all to come to an understanding of what Paul had to write to the church. Second, one of the things I love about the church is that we believe in what we call the priesthood of all believers. That's a quote that came out of Martin Luther, one of the reformers of who we have, you know, part of our reformed heritage, right? And what he meant by that is that we respect that everyone, you don't have to be a pastor like myself, but everyone can read the Scriptures and understand the Scripture. And the Holy Spirit will speak to you to discern what Scripture is saying. And I think that's so important. And then even in passages like this, that might be, that we're going to cover here in just a second, that might be a little difficult to understand or, you know, or comprehend or get a hold of, that you can make up your own mind. I'll throw all the things out there. I'll certainly share what I think, but in the end, you can make up your own mind. And I think that's very important, and we hold that pretty highly in our church. Then the third thing that I love about the RB Community Church is that in the non-essentials of faith, and this passage is not an essential passage about our faith. It is an important passage about worship. It's an important passage that Paul was writing to the church in Ephesus, but is not essential to our belief. And when we get into things like that, when we get into the non-essentials, we can still be brothers and sisters in Christ, even though we may hold different positions or opinions or ideas. So that's no problem. So that's good, and that's another thing I like about our church. We have people who hold different positions and ideas on certain theological spots, but we still love each other, and we still talk with one another and share and argue and, you know, and work things out, but that's what makes it fun. That's what it's all about. And then the fourth thing I really love about our church is we believe in using Scripture to interpret Scripture for a better understanding of difficult passages. And I'll try to do some of that for you today as we look at these verses eight through 14. So as we get into that, keep those things in mind, and let's head into some really good stuff. So in verse eight, he writes specifically to the men. He starts out, you know, we made this broad kind of setting and foundation that begins the second chapter, and then he now starts targeting a few things. And the first thing, he goes right to the men. And we know that there, as we found out in the first chapter, that some of the men teaching there had some difficulties and problems, and they needed to, he needed to focus on them. And so he does, in verse eight, he says, "I want men everywhere to lift up holy hands in prayer without anger or disputing." So that's, I think, pretty important. He wants to get with the men and says, "Look at, you need to be men of prayer. What were they doing? What was the problem?" Let's go back to the first chapter, so we keep focused on what was happening in the church at the time. Well, let's find out. In verse three of chapter one, remember, he says, "So that you may command..." He's talking to Timothy. "I want you to command certain men not to teach false doctrines any longer, nor devote themselves to myths and endless genealogies." We're not going to talk about crazy stuff like that, trying to figure out who's the most important person, because they're related to somebody that they could trace back through the Old Testament or whatever else. That's not the point of worship. And so he's getting back to these guys here, and he's saying, "Hey, we don't need anger or disputing." You know, remember, he also said, "These promote controversies," there in chapter one, verse four, "rather than God's work." You guys, cut it out. That's what he's saying. Knock it off. We don't want you to promote controversies and all this other endless ridiculous talk about stuff. Be men of prayer. Get to the business of prayer, because we want the holiness, that he talked about in the beginning of the chapter, and the godliness to come out of you. And that's what we need. And so you need to be, your hands need to be in prayer. That needs to be a real quality that you have in worship, but also that you bring to worship, a prayerful attitude, a prayerful quality that comes out of this holiness that you should have within you. So I think that's pretty important to be thinking about, to have that deep reverence for God that he talks about in the very beginning of the second chapter there. Then he turns to some women. Now, we find that there's a group of women in the church who are following this kind of poor teaching of these men, and they are having some difficulties in the church. And Paul directly goes after the women who were having these difficulties, just like he had talked to the men. And he says, "I also want..." Verse nine, "I also want women to dress modestly with decency and propriety, not with braided hair, or gold, or pearls, or expensive clothes, but with good deeds..." Verse 10, going on to verse 10, "But with good deeds appropriate for women who profess to worship God." Now, I know there are some people who, you know, interpret this passage to mean that Paul was saying that women can't come to church with braided hair, or to wear gold, or even expensive dresses, or whatever. I just don't think that's what he was talking about. That's not what was important to him. You know, he wasn't talking about that. He was, he was talking about what their focus was for them, yeah. Focus was, hey, what do I look like? You know, and I mean, we can take a lesson from that today in this selfie world that we're living in, you know? How do I look? What scene am I making when I come to church? Instead of coming to church prepared for worship, to be there to worship God. So, you know, it's a, it's a group of women who are following all this meaningless talk, this poor teaching, this overconfidence of teachers, and were completely coming into worship concerned about all kinds of things other than what they needed to be concerned about. And, you know, what did they need to be concerned about? Well, they need to come to worship not worried about dress, but how to worship God. And you do that by coming in with a contrite heart, you know, to say, "Oh, you know, I'm a sinner." Remember Paul pointing out his sinfulness? And I'm coming understanding that. "I want to have an openness to the means of grace that God has for me." And one of our means of grace is the preaching of God's Word, which is central to any worship. It is certainly central to our worship. And so preaching is very important, but I got to come in to hear, what does God have to say to me? How can I be pliable and open to listen to what God is teaching me? Then also, I can be challenged to grow in my faith by the Holy Spirit when I have this spirit within me, this sense of reverence, you know, that I'm coming in, not worrying about who sees me or what I'm wearing and all those, trying to make a fashion statement or try to be somebody important or whatever. No, I'm there to be challenged by the Holy Spirit to grow in the Lord Jesus into what He calls me to. And then, of course, also to be encouraged. I want to be encouraged in my walk with the Lord. It's tough. It's hard. I go the whole week, and there's so many things that can get in the way and throw me off my focus. I want to come to a church, go into worship, open, pliable, ready, and then be also encouraged so that I can fulfill what God has called me to do. That's what Paul wanted for those women. You know, that's what they needed there. What a good reminder for us even on how to worship God, right? You know, that's the important thing. We need that too. Then in verse 11, he says, "A woman should learn in quietness and full submission." And I know that some people have interpreted that passage to mean that women can't speak in a church, you know, they can't talk in worship or can't speak. I certainly don't think that that's what Paul had in mind. For one thing, the word he uses there in quietness and full submission is the same word he used in the beginning of the chapter, in verse, in chapter two, right there in verse two, where he says, "We may live peacefully and quiet lives." Same word, quiet, quietness, same root, same idea. The godliness and holiness, we need to be in reverence. Women could certainly speak. It was just to keep a tone of reverence and of godliness represented in your speech and life. So that was important. Those women needed that in that place and in that time. And then, of course, he goes on in verse 12 to say, "I do not permit a woman to teach or to have authority over a man. She must be silent." And of course, that verse has had a lot of scholarship looking at it, and a lot of different people preaching and teaching about it. Again, I think one thing that you have to remember, not just in this one verse or in this, even this passage of eight through 14, but the whole book, is the idea that Paul is speaking to the church at Ephesus, to the concerns that they have, and we can get some things out of that. But I don't think Paul was trying to make a general statement to the whole church, because I've had people who have, I've heard teaching on this particular passage on verse 12, "I do not permit a woman to teach or to have authority over a man. She must be silent." Again, where they couldn't speak and they couldn't teach in the church. Well, I just don't think that's what Paul was trying to say here. And one of the reasons that I think that, and I hold a position that I think Paul was speaking specifically to the needs of the Ephesian church, is that we don't see that same thing in other passages. For example, I want to look at Acts chapter 18. You can go to Acts chapter 18, read the chapter, but particularly focus on what's happening. And in that chapter, there's a guy named Apollos. He's a man, and he's out there preaching and teaching, and he's doing a great job. He's really powerful. God has really gifted him. He's going to town. Lots of people are coming to know the Lord, and good things are happening. Except he doesn't have the whole story. It's kind of like some of the disciples once ran into, some of Jesus' disciples once ran into later after the resurrection into some of John's disciples. And those, John's disciples hadn't heard the whole message of the gospel, the resurrection of Christ and so forth. And so they were excited and they were teaching, but they didn't have the whole story. And so here come Priscilla, a woman who's married to Aquila, her husband Aquila, and they hear him, and they're, they've been charged by Paul, hands have been laid on them in the church, and so they're out there preaching and teaching. them in the church, and so they're out there preaching and teaching. And they go, and they see here Apollos, and he's doing a great job, but he doesn't have the full story. And they take him aside, and Aquila teaches Apollo with her, Apollos, with her husband, Aquila, Priscilla, takes her husband, Aquila, and teaches Apollos the full gospel, the full thing to help him out. Now, a lot of people say, "Well, yeah, she took him aside quietly to teach him there because she wouldn't teach him in front of the church or in front of a bunch of people, because she wasn't supposed to be doing that." I don't think so. I think she took him aside not to embarrass him. You're not going to say that to somebody who's really doing a good job, that a lot of people respect. "Hey, I don't think you're teaching the whole thing." No, you take him aside privately, you tell him the things that need to be told to expand his teaching, and then you let him go, let the Holy Spirit really work and be powerful, which is exactly what they did. So we certainly see Priscilla in an important teaching role. Another thing to look at is Phobbi, who was a deaconess in the church, and who had the important task of carrying Paul's letter to the Romans. His magnum opus of theology, he gave to a woman to take to Rome. I mean, that's fantastic. Read it, and he mentions her doing that in Romans 16. He also mentions, and read the whole chapter, we're running out of time, I see, but read the whole chapter, because he mentions many other women who are working with him in the ministry. So they took leadership roles there, and they were teaching there, no problems. Another thing that you could look at is 1 Corinthians, chapter 12, the whole chapter, which is one of the spiritual gifts chapter, but if you want to focus on one area, you can go to verses 27 through 30. And there you'll find that Paul is talking about the gift of teaching, he lists that in there. And he never says that that teaching, or any other gift, leadership or others, is only for men. I think if that was a very important point and an essential part of our faith, I think Paul would have wrote that in there. Well, these gifts are for women, these gifts are for men, or these gifts are for both. No, he says, "For all of, all the church, for everybody in the church, here are the gifts," boom, 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 and he starts listing them out there. And of course, we also have support for that in the Old Testament. If you turn over to Judges, chapter four, verse four, you'll see that Deborah is a prophetess and a judge, certainly a leadership part in Israel. That's where people went in that day and age to hear what the instructions were from God, to be taught what they needed to do or to repent from. And Deborah was a part of that. She was also a prophetess, which is not only someone who can predict the future, but a big part, probably 90% of a prophet's work was calling people back to truth. There's a lot of preaching in that and a lot of teaching. So we see that there too. And then if you go to the prophet Joel, in chapter two, verse 28, we see as he speaks about the end times, and he says, "Look at, you'll know you're in the end times when God pours out His Spirit upon the church, and this is what's going to happen. Your sons and daughters will prophesy." Powerful stuff. Prophesy, again, that's a teaching, leadership kind of position, calling people back to truth. So we see again that both sons and daughters will be a part of that. So what does that mean for us? I think it means that Paul is speaking to a particular issue in Ephesus. And I think that's why RB Community Church has elders and deacons who are women, and they're certainly allowed to teach in our college of the Bible. We don't have any problem with that, and we don't think we're going against Scripture for it. Now, the last, quickly go, I know we're coming to the end of our time together, but I want to just quickly go through the last couple of verses of the chapter. So much stuff, we're digging into it, man, this is the meat, right? I mean, you can't get any meatier than this. But we have verses 13 through 15, something really, really interesting that Paul writes down, it's kind of confusing at times. "But you see, for Adam," he writes in verse 13, "was formed first, then Eve; and Adam was not the one deceived; it was the woman who was deceived and became a sinner. But women will be saved through childbearing if they continue in faith, love, and holiness with propriety." And that's how he ends out that chapter. What in the world was Paul talking about? Well, real quickly, let me just go over some things. "These troubled women in Ephesus," and remember, that's the focus. Focus was their worship, the focus was the men and women in their worship, and some of the things that they were not focused on. But these troubled women in Ephesus are the focus here. And like Eve, they were deceived, deceived by these poor teachers that Paul is trying to get after. And this deception is bringing sin into the church of Ephesus. But like Mary, the mother of Jesus, who brought into the world the Savior, so these women can bring into the church a new birth, faith, love, and holiness. That can happen. They can turn it around, they can make this worship something important if they live with propriety, which means if they listen to Timothy and follow the directions of the Lord. All right, I'm out of time, that's a lot of stuff. I know we moved pretty quickly, we're going to get into chapter three, next class session. I'm so glad you were here. God bless you and keep you, make His face shine upon you, and give you peace until we meet again.